Good evening, all. It's Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, seven P. M. City Council meeting. I call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Councilman Becker?
Here.
Councilman Jacob?
Here.
Councilman Let's Go here?
Here.
Councilman Schultz?
Here.
President Johnson?
Here. Item three, public hearings. Tonight, we have none. Item four, public comment. The city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon: name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No one, no action will be taken on any public comment unless the item is elsewhere on the agenda. Those participating with our meeting by Zoom, that you, we request that you remain muted, but if you wish to speak, hold up your virtual hand and you will be called upon and have an opportunity. First call for public comment, we have David Freego.
Good evening.
Just have you state your name and address, please?
One day last week when I was walking-
I'm sorry, David. Can you state your name and address, please?
Uh, David Freego, four oh nine Milo Street. About a week or so ago, I was walking my dog and it's at wooded section between the old railroad station and going south towards Joneses. And there was, in amongst some of the trees, a cot with a sleeping bag and pillow. Obviously, somebody was making a little home there. Yeah, since then, it's disappeared. So I don't know if it's just some homeless person or if it was some migrant. Now, I know uh, down in Whitewater, they have had an influx of migrants. And I was just wondering if the city up here has any, had any discussions or plans on handling that situation if it occurs here, too? Because last night on channel twenty-seven, I caught part of the news and Don Whitewater, the city council, was having a open forum meeting with the citizens discussing the migrants. And if you had something like that, perhaps people who'd want to help them could get contact information as to who to contact or what to do to help these people. Or if there's some people have concerns about them, those concerns could be also addressed. So I would hope that you would take this in consideration and perhaps sometime have some kind of open meeting like that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jody Raditz.
Hi, Jody Raditz. I live at one, two, four, five Jeanette Street in Fort. Um, I have just been thinking about the bike path and the river walk, making that into a community nicer thing. And um, while I think it's a great idea, I'm really concerned about the amount of money that it's gonna take when um, I think the priority needs to be the roads. And um, on the riverwalk, I just don't see where there is gonna be room to widen that much for a bike path, as much as I would think that would be a great thing. Um, and then on, because I've walked that road and that, that's really tight there. And the other thing is on South Main, where are you gonna put the bike path? I just thought it was gonna be, when I heard the one million dollar figure, I just thought, you gotta be kidding me. I just thought it was gonna be a painted line. So um, I just want to voice that I'm against spending the money for that. Thank you.
Next, we have John House.
John House, one oh four Jefferson Street. Uh, the first thing I'd like to bring up again is the invasive species that's growing out in the west side of town. It's uh, getting really, really bad. And I've also noticed that the school out there is just completely inundated with it. Gee, is there any ordinance or something? We can get somebody to, you know, get out there and help them do it? I have the knowledge. I know what chemicals need to be used to take care of that stuff. Cause I have it on my wetland reserve property. So that's just a thought. Now, the Riverside Drive repair thing, um, I haven't heard any numbers or anything. Is there any way you guys can run the bike trail up Sherman Avenue or anything and then you can go into Riverside Park? And then go on to the one oh six? That would save a lot of uh, closeness and traffic accidents. Then the other issue I'd like to talk about is I see Andy has a stormwater report. Um, I'm just wondering about the future, how much more water is gonna get thrown into our family marsh? How much more sediment is gonna come in there? I did talk to Jeff Woods about it. And when he left, he told me he had a five-year maintenance program on that holding pond. The thing is blown out right now. There's a, there's an island or a isthmus, you could call it. And it's, there's a ten-foot hole in it, so the water comes shooting out, goes right straight into the pipe that goes into our marsh. So there's no settling uh, going on. I shouldn't say no. There's probably some settling going on. So I'd like to get chatted with about it. At least somebody call me and go out and look at it. I actually have had the D N R out there from the water department and uh, we had an interesting discussion about it, so. Just for the future for my kids.
Next, we have Frankie Fuller.
There's a revolution on the, on the agenda later that I'm hoping you'll pass. You've already blessed me on it.
Now, first call for public hot, uh, for a public comment from the audience or from Zoom. Second call for public comment. Third and final call for public comment. Public comment is close. Item five, the consent agenda. The consent agenda outlined below is hereby presented for action with the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed, items five A through five G.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, petitions, requests, and communications. Presentation, item A, presentation, annual stormwater report, Mr. Sully.
Good evening. Uh, this is a, uh, an annual report as, as noted there, um, that we provide to the D N R. Uh, we are an M S four, uh, permitted community. Uh, M S four stands for municipal separate stormwater sewer system. Um, it essentially uh, is our requirements, uh, to reduce the amount of pollution that's going into the Bark and Rock Rivers. Um, and everything that falls, uh, in a, a liquid form or frozen form, frankly, um, in the city goes into those two rivers. Uh, the report has a number of elements to it. I'll just highlight a few things. Um, our M S four permit is governed, uh, by the T M D L, uh, total maximum daily load. As council will recall, that's a uh, essentially a number that's been calculated, um, and provided, uh, for the Rock River and the Bark River, um, as to how much pollution those two water bodies can take, uh, before negative impacts occur. Uh, so the city, uh, has a portion of that, uh, daily load of pollution, um, that has been set. Uh, we are in, uh, excess of that right now, but we have a plan, uh, to come in, uh, below that, um, number over time. Uh, in fact, some of the, uh, updates that we've made to the wastewater treatment plant, um, have in fact, uh, made more than, uh, a small dent, uh, in our overall, uh, pollution, um, uh, tallies there. Um, but anyway, uh, the, uh, the phosphorus, excuse me, uh, the T M D L is largely aimed at reducing phosphorus that gets into the river. Uh, phosphorus, um, for, for the, uh, the layman's, um, terminology essentially turns the river green. It's fertilizer for the river. And phosphorus is found in everything from, uh, the lawn fertilizers that are placed, uh, on residential, uh, yards to the leaves that fall from the trees. Uh, and so we've done a number of different things to try to reduce the amount of phosphorus that is going into the river, um, both for the city, uh, as well as for, uh, the wastewater treatment facility. Uh, most of our, uh, public reporting for the stormwater report is accomplished through the Rock River Stormwater Group. Um, council may recall that we are a member of the Rock River Stormwater Group. Uh, any, uh, communities up and down the Rock River, um, are open to membership in that group. Uh, that group is, um, uh, has hired the, um, Creative Marketing Unlimited out of the University of Whitewater, um, essentially a group of college students that has a couple of, uh, faculty advisors. Uh, and they, uh, run a lot of events for, uh, the city members of the Rock River Stormwater Group that are the educational component to our, uh, annual stormwater permit. Uh, so you'll see them over the summer at the, um, uh, farmer's market. Uh, they coordinate, uh, a large part of the fall cleanup that we have on the Rock River, on the Bark River. Um, they come into the schools and do presentations and things of that nature. So, uh, it's a very active group and one that, uh, is pretty, uh, effective, um, because me, uh, simply going around and, and trying to make appearances and talk about stormwater at those events is, uh, is not all that efficient. Um, so anyway, a little backstory on, uh, on stormwater, um, and, uh, and what we've got going on here within the city of Fort Atkinson. The report is a little, uh, cryptic, frankly, uh, if you reviewed it. Uh, so if you have any questions, uh, I'd be happy to, to answer them either, either now or, uh, later on to kind of decipher some of that, uh, information that's been put out there. Great. Thank you very much.
Item six B, review and possible action on a proclamation recognizing Fair Housing Month in the city of Fort Atkinson. Ms. Housen?
Thank you. Uh, the month of April is celebrated as National Fair Housing Month, and this is the fifty-sixth, sixth anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. Uh, we do have a proclamation, um, that declares the city's support for fair housing initiatives and recognizes the benefits of a diverse and inclusive community. The proclamation further declares April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Fort Atkinson. Uh, this is part of our, um, part of the, uh, requirements for our, um, escaping me right now what it's required for, but it is part of our, um, a requirement for our, um, several things. Yeah. Sorry. I apologize for that. Um, anyway, this is a proclamation. We do this annually, uh, to declare the month of April as Fair Housing Month in the city. Uh, there, it's not expected to have a financial impact on the city, and we do recommend that, uh, the council adopt this proclamation.
I move to proclaim April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second.
Further debate? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six C, review and possible action on a proclamation rec- recognizing National Library Week, April seventh through the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, in the city of Fort Atkinson. Ms. Housen?
Thank you. Uh, National Library Week was celebrated April seventh through the thirteenth. Uh, it is an annual celebration highlighting the valuable role that libraries and library workers play in transforming the lives of people in their communities. Uh, we did celebrate, uh, National Library Week here. Um, there are a bunch of, uh, really fun pictures, uh, on the city's Facebook page and on the, uh, Dwight Foster Public Library Facebook page, uh, with all of the different ways that, um, our library did celebrate. Uh, so it was last week. Uh, again, this proclamation is not expected to have a financial impact on the city. We do recommend that the, um, that the council or the, um, city council approve it, and we do have our library director, um, Eric Robinson here to accept the proclamation, uh, if it's adopted.
I would move to proclaim National Library Week, uh, April seventh to thirteen, two thousand and twenty-four, in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We want to get in and have a nice old farewell picture. Mason, David, picture? Let's, oh, we'll do one of them. I wanna.
Item six D, review and possible action on a proclamation recognizing After School Professionals Appreciation Week, April twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Housen?
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, April twenty-sixth or twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, this week is After School Professionals Appreciation Week, uh, a dedicated week to recognize, uh, and appreciate and advocate for those who work with young people, uh, during those out-of-school hours. Uh, it is a time, um, uh, the city of Fort Atkinson is lucky to have organizations, including the Fort Atkinson Youth Center, the Badgerland After School, uh, enrichment program or base, uh, and all of the other after-school program, uh, and care providers, uh, in the city that help shape the youth of Fort Atkinson. So this is an opportunity to recognize them, and we do have base executive director Alicia Norris here in the crowd to accept this proclamation. Uh, it does not have, uh, expected to have a financial impact, and we do, um, staff does recommend that the city council approve it.
I move to proclaim After School Professionals Appreciation Week, April twenty-second through twenty, uh, the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, res- resolutions and ordinances. Seven A, review and possible action on a resolution relating to less mow May, a temporary exemption to section one oh two dash one twenty-one B one of the city municipal code. Ms. Housen?
Thank you. Uh, so since two thousand and twenty-one, the city has participated in no mow May, uh, and the city council has, uh, adopted a temporary exception to, uh, one of our municipal codes, which would allow for grass to exceed that standard eight, uh, inch, um, maximum in order to facilitate, um, and promote and educate, um, folks about, um, the successful emergence and survival of pollinators in May. Uh, so the heart of the city has requested that the city provide that same exception as in previous years, but this year, um, we're calling it less mow May, uh, because they've actually, uh, found, uh, research that indicates that mowing every two to three weeks is better for pollinators than just letting, um, letting the grass grow for the entire month. So, um, this, uh, would exceptional, uh, the proposed exception would allow rear yards of residential properties, uh, and designated city-owned property, uh, to be exempt from the enforcement of that, uh, eight-inch maximum, uh, grass through the month of May, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, the memo does outline a few of the, um, city, uh, owned properties that would be included in the exception. Uh, Berry Park, uh, near the playground, um, North Main Street and North Force, Fourth Street by the, um, train tracks. And, uh, an area by Jones Park and then an area, uh, in Wilcox Park. So again, this is not expected to have a financial impact, uh, to the city, and staff does recommend that the city council adopt the, uh, attached resolution allowing that temporary exception to section one oh two dash one twenty-one sub B sub one from May one, two thousand and twenty-four to May thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, and declare the month less mow May in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Just had one question with it. Um, I know years past, it's always been written that is technically only for the backyard. Is that still?
Yes, it is for the rear yard of residential properties.
Okay.
I, I like the concept and, you know, I've, I voted for no mow May every year. I think it's a, it's a nice, it's a nice thing. It's completely opt, residents can do it, you know, or choose not to participate. Um, the less mow May, I, I had not heard about before. Um, I'm just, and I like it. It's kind of distinctive. Do, do we know our other communities moving to this, or is this kind of a Fort Atkinson being a pioneer in this regard?
Uh, I do not know if other communities are, are going with less mow May. Uh, this was a request from the heart of the city.
I'd, I'd heard last year, other communities kind of pushing for this initiative because of the evidence towards it. So.
I, I like it. I'll move to approve the resolution relating to less mow May, a temporary exception to section one oh two dash one twenty-one B one of the city of Fort Atkinson municipal code.
Second.
Motion and a second? All those, this is, is this a roll call vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven B, second and possible third and final reading of an ordinance amending section twenty-two dash two six two and twenty-two dash two six three relating to direct sellers. Ms. Ebert?
Thank you. Um, this is the second reading of the ordinance. Um, I will kind of review the recommended changes, but just to make note, um, we have, staff has not received any comments or feedback from the recommended changes that we have. So, um, briefly, the first section discusses removing the fee from the ordinance. This doesn't delete the fee. This takes it out of the ordinance and allows the council to review it annually as they do all fees for other licenses. The annual review is done with the budget, uh, in the fall. It's the fee resolution. So this just takes out the ordinance and allows council to review it regularly. Um, the second is allowing revocation or suspension to be designated this by the, um, change it from chief of police to the city manager or his or her designee. Um, so currently it does kind of have, uh, some limitations. So allowing the city manager or, um, their designation, um, they be out of town or for another reason. The third would be setting a maximum number of licenses per business. So example, um, if there is a sales company that is coming to the city and they want to, uh, extend, uh, some of their employees to go door-to-door, this would set a maximum of ten individuals per business. Okay? Uh, background checks are done on all applicants. Uh, we had some issues prior years where there was fifteen, sixteen, seventeen individuals from one business, and that seemed like a lot for the company to manage, and we did have some concerns and some complaints on that. Final would be limiting the hours that direct sellers could call upon a residential property. Right now, it allows calling from nine A. M. To eight P. M., and we want to adjust that from nine A. M. To seven P. M. The reason that we want to request it for one less hour in the evening is what we saw earlier this winter when it was really nice out. We had some direct sellers that were going to properties, January or February, it's pretty dark out even after five o'clock. So for someone to be calling upon your house, seven thirty to quarter eight, we thought that was a little late, and we received some phone calls, um, at city hall, just some people questioning that to make sure that they were allowed to do that, but it just kind of threw them off. So we thought maybe we would adjust that, and that's just, uh, limiting one hour less. Uh, happy to answer any questions from the council. Uh, you could present this to a third reading at the next meeting, or you could suspend the rules, waive the third reading, and it could be adopted today.
I've had a few people just kind of question me about it and a little bit, you know, once you explained to them the reasons for changing it, they were greatly appreciative of it. And being how the city has not seen any, um, concerns come to them, I would move to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of the ordinance, amending section twenty-two dash two six two and twenty-two dash two six three relating to direct sellers.
Second.
Having a motion and a second? This is a roll call vote?
Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Jacob?
Aye.
Councilman Let's Go here?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Here. Aye.
Thank you. President Johnson?
Aye.
I knew what you meant.
Motion carries.
We'd be looking for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I would move to adopt the ordinance amending sections twenty-two dash two six two and twenty-two dash two six three relating to direct sellers.
Second.
Having a motion and a second?
Yeah, I did, I just say, uh, I, I think there's been good discussion on this, and I appreciate the work that was put in on the, on the changes. I think, uh, you know, they're gonna address some of the complaints we've had over the last couple of years.
Great. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, reports of officers, boards, and committees. City managers report, Ms. Housen?
Thank you. On April eleventh, several staff members attended the Fort Atkinson High School Career Fair and shared information with students about municipal cu- careers. Uh, K nine officer Smitty and handler officer Lawrence stole the show, uh, for usual. Um, but I, uh, just wanted to thank everybody who participated in, in that, uh, very successful event. On April fourteenth, the Hord Museum, uh, opened part two of the sixty, uh, sixty-second Mary Hord Art Show. High school students from Fort Atkinson High School, as well as Faith Community School, uh, in addition to adults from around Jefferson County entered two hundred and twenty-eight pieces of art into that show, uh, which is, uh, will remain open until Saturday, April twenty-seventh at four P. M. On Monday, uh, Clerk Ebert and I participated in our ratings call with S and P Global. Uh, the call, along with the city's audits, financial policies and documents, and general financial health, will all be considered as S and P determines the city's bond rating, uh, which will then impact the long-term interest rate for our two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five borrowing as we refinance that note, anticipation note into long-term, uh, general obligation debt over the next month or so. Progress on the Public Works and Parks Operations Facility Construction Project continues. The massive footings were poured today. Uh, we've got some pictures out on our, um, Facebook. Um, check those out, please. Um, and thank you to Tom Williamson and his team for documenting the progress and managing this, uh, in this vital project. Uh, today, Chief Peterson and I met with the school district, uh, superintendent and high school principal to discuss how the fire and U M S department can partner with the school district on C P R training, stop the bleed training, and other education and community, uh, communication efforts. Our goals include relationship building, similar to those already established with the police department and administration, as well as community outreach and future recruitment. Tomorrow, we're hosting the lunch bunch for homeschoolers here at the municipal building. They're usually at the library, but we're hosting them here, and we're very excited. I will bore the kids with information about local government administration and budgeting and all those things. And then our excellent Parks and Recreation Team will take them to the gym and let them play a little bit. So on April twenty ninth, we will be holding a farewell for our library director, Eric Robinson, who is here with us tonight at the library from one to three. He is moving on to the Hedberg Public Library in Janesville. We will certainly miss him. But we must move on, right? So the library board and the city are already working together on the recruitment process for the new director. The city's website has more information, including the job advertisement, the, and the deadline for, for applications. I will also note that activity at the library has not slowed down despite this upcoming transition. Our wonderful staff has been preparing for the summer reading program in addition to all of our regular events and offerings. And I was just commenting today that I, I go in and approve these invoices, and by the look of, by the looks of the things that the library is buying, I'm very excited for, for what they're going to offer this summer. So that's my little sneak peek that I, that I get to have through, through my role here. And then I just wanted to note that there's a fifth Tuesday in April, so the next city council meeting won't be until May seventh. So everybody has that on their calendar, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Item nine, unfinished business. Review and possible action relating to certified survey map for Opportunities Incorporated for the property located at two oh one East Kramer Street, Mr. Sully.
Thank you. The Planning Commission considered this at their meeting last week and approved it. The CSM is going to combine what are two lots on the north side of Kramer Street in the, in what I would call the Opportunities Campus. I think you had a figure in your packet that kind of mapped that out. The requirements of approval for this particular CSM include a parking easement to be submitted to city staff for review. That easement will take the parking lot that is adjacent to Kramer Street and identify that as being for the sole use of a building on the south side of Kramer Street. The second was to establish two stormwater easements on the new CSM, one for an existing stormwater pond that, that is just north of the existing parking lot, and the other for a second to be built with this project. And the third was to combine parcels on the south side of Kramer Street. The two existing buildings that are located there actually straddle four parcels, so we'd like those to be cleaned up and, and taken down to two parcels, one for each of the buildings, which will make it much easier to address the parking easement as well. As I said, Planning Commission really didn't have a whole lot of discussion about this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have with this particular item.
I will also just note that the Plan Commission approved the, the site plan for the building addition on that property as well.
I move to approve the certified. I move to approve the certified survey map for Opportunities Incorporated for the property located two oh one East Kramer Street, subject to conditions recommended by staff and Plan Commission.
Second. Any further debate? Having a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item ten, claims appropriation and contract payments. Review and possible action relating to verified claims from March twenty first through thirty first, twenty twenty four, presented by the Director of Finance and Authorization of Payments.
I would move to approve the list of verified claims for March twenty first to the thirty first, twenty twenty four, as presented.
Second. Having a motion and a second, this is a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Jacob.
Aye.
Councilman Lescohere.
Aye.
Councilman Schultz.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries. Item B, remove, review and possible action relating to verified claims for April first through the sixth, April sixteenth, twenty twenty four, presented by the Director of Finance and Authorization of Payment.
I move to approve the list of verified claims for April first to the sixteenth, twenty twenty four, as presented.
Second. This is also a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Jacob.
Aye.
Councilman Lescohere.
Aye.
Councilman Schultz.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries. Item eleven, adjournment, twenty twenty three City Council adjourn, send aye.
I move to adjourn the final meeting of the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four Fort Atkinson City Council, send aye.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
At this time, we'll have Clerk Ebert do the oath of office for our newly elected city council members. And I will take some pictures.
Aye, Aaron Schultz.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the position of city council.
To the position of city council.
Serve that I will support.
Serve that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Set office.
Set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To help me God.
To help me God.
Okay, I will call to order the first meeting of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Fort Atkinson City Council Meeting. All roll call, please.
Councilman Becker.
Here.
Councilman Jacob.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Lescohere.
Here.
Councilman Schultz.
Here.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the election of the president of the city council for the term April sixteen, twenty twenty four to April fifteen, twenty twenty five. At this time, I will call for nominations for the position of council president.
Manager Howson, I would respectfully like to nominate Councilman David Lescohere.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Lescohere, do you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Okay, great. Are there any other nominations from the city council? Second call for nominations for the office of president. Third final call. Okay, hearing none, we can do a voice vote for this. We have a motion and a second to nominate David Lescohere as the council president for the term April sixteen, twenty twenty four to April fifteen, twenty twenty five. Any additional discussion or councilmember Lescohere, do you want to say anything?
No, I would just say I have had a chance to serve as president a couple of years in the past and continue to learn from watching others observe and kind of, I would offer to build and, and continue the traditions that they have.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Congratulations, President Lescohere. You, the meeting is yours to chair. You want to switch spots?
That's what it means.
Okay, well.
Do we have a moment to say thank you?
Yeah, I was going to say, thank you all, and especially to our immediate past President Johnson for guiding us through the past year.
I thoroughly enjoyed it.
Yeah, no, I would, I'd like to second that. It's been an absolute honor working with you as you have been serving as the council president. I think there are some things that we've seen happen within the city that I don't think we, we would have seen happen without you. So I definitely appreciate being able to observe you from this angle back here, and I can, I look forward to continue working with you, Bruce.
Thank you. I as well look forward to working with you folks. It's been an absolute pleasure.
Okay, anything else on this item? Oh, all right. Item thirteen D, election of president pro tem by the council president for a term of April sixteenth, twenty twenty four through April fifteenth, twenty twenty five. At this time, I'd like to call for nominations from the council for the position of pro tem. This position serves as council president in my absence.
I move to nominate Eric Schultz to the present, position of president pro tem for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to nominate Eric Schultz for president pro tem. Would ask you if you are willing to accept that nomination.
I accept.
Any other nominations? Second call for any nominations. Third and final call for any nominations for president pro tem. Seeing done. We have a motion to nominate council member Eric Schultz to the position of president pro tem for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five year. We can repeat the process of a voice vote here. We're all agreeing there. All right, those in favor of not, of appointing Eric Schultz as president pro tem signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. We have president pro tem, thank you. Item thirteen E, review and possible confirmation of the city manager's appointment of Eric Schultz to serve as the council representative on the Plan Commission. Senator Howson.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz has been on the Plan Commission now, I believe, for two years, or has it just been?
Four, five, yeah.
Oh.
Not, not as council representative, but before that I was a, yes, thanks.
So he's a very experienced plan commissioner. He does a great job, offers a really good perspective, and for those reasons, I would like to have him continue on that role as the council representative on the Plan Commission.
I'll move to confirm the appointment of Eric Schultz to serve as council representative on the Plan Commission for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the appointment. Any discussion?
I was, I'm impressed with Mr. Schultz. He's very thorough and very intelligent. He's a good place for him there.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing done, the motion is to confirm the appointment of Eric Schultz to serve as the council representative on the Plan Commission for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Item thirteen F, review and possible action to designate the Daily Jefferson County Union as the official city newspaper for purposes of publishing required legal notices. Clerk Ebert.
Thank you. As required, annually, we are to select a regular published newspaper for our typical notices that we post following ordinances, election notices. We are very fortunate to have a daily newspaper in our community, which not all communities have that, so we reap a lot of benefits from that. So we continue to encourage and keep up your subscriptions. Not only does it share news within our community, but it assists with our bond rating, which assists with low interest rates when we do bar. Just had to put that plug in there. Sorry, I would request the council to designate the Daily Jefferson County Union as our official city newspaper.
I move to approve to designate the Daily Jefferson County Union as the official city newspaper for the purpose of publishing and required legal dot notices.
Second, I motion and a second to approve the Daily Jefferson County Union as our city's official newspaper. Any discussion? Seeing done, the motion is to designate the Daily Jefferson County Union as the official city paper for purposes of publishing required legal notices. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Item fourteen, new business. We have none this evening. Item fifteen, closed session. Item fifteen A, the city council may consider a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to state statutes nineteen point eight five one G to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved.
I would move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen point eight five one G to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by, by the body with respect to litigation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing done, motion is to convene in closed session pursuant to state sections, state statute, section nineteen point eight five one G to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation. This is a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Jacob.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Schultz.
Aye.
President Lescohere.
Aye. Motion is approved unanimously.